Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our meeting for November the 4th. Ms. Hilbert, will you please call roll?
Yes, sir. Councilwoman Delgarza.
I am present.
Councilwoman Kidder.
Here.
Councilwoman Butler.
Present.
Councilwoman Scott.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Young.
Here.
Councilwoman Lofgren.
Here.
And Mayor Crocker.
Here. If you would, please stand. Join me for the pledges, followed by a moment of silence.
(inaudible) the United States of America, a sovereign republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
(inaudible).
Under Texas law, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Please be seated. Again, welcome, everyone. Good to see good attendance this evening, and we will jump right into Section B of our agenda, and we'll start with announcements and reminders. Mr. Garza, good evening. Do you have anything for us this evening?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I do have several announcements for you this evening. We would like to start by reminding the public that all city non-emergency offices will be closed on Tuesday, November 11th in observance of Veterans Day. Offices will reopen on Wednesday, November 12th at 8:00 a.m. Trash recycling and yard waste will be collected as scheduled, and the Victoria Public Library will be closed on that day. In addition, next week, on Wednesday, November 12th, we will be holding a special council meeting here in council chambers at 8:30 a.m. Again, that's on Wednesday, November 12th, and that is for the sole purpose of canvassing the results of today's election. On behalf of our Grants Department, we'd like to announce that we did finally officially receive a contract for the $19 million that we applied for forever ago regarding the CDBG MIT funds. Of course, these are the funds that are going towards some of the SCADA investments that we need to make into our utility, a project at the Regional Wastewater Treatment Plant, as well as a project at Lone Tree Acres Neighborhood that includes some drainage improvements and some street improvements. To that end, residents who live in the Lone Tree Acres Neighborhood will soon receive information and a survey questionnaire from the city regarding this project. Excuse me. Because this project may be supported with federal funds, the city is required to collect this data from residents in the service area. In addition, the city will host an information event on Saturday, November 8th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Fire Station Number 3, located at the corner of Lone Tree and Anthony Road, to help gather this essential information for this project. Residents in Lone Tree Acres can come visit city staff with any questions or concerns, and will have the opportunity to respond to the survey at that time as well. The information regarding the project will also be accessible and visible at victorix.gov backslash public notices, and so we look forward to meeting with the residents in that area to talk about the project. On behalf of Development Services and our MPO, we'd like to remind the public that we are continuing the implementation of the new route study that our public transportation partner through the GCRPC is putting on. We will be hosting two come and go meetings for residents to ask questions and provide feedback on this study and the implementation of it, which is operated, of course, by GCRPC on our behalf. Meetings will be held November 17th from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the Community Center Annex, and November 20th from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Victoria Public Library. Residents can also provide feedback by visiting victorix.gov backslash transit plan and filling out a survey or commenting on the interactive map by November 14th, and so we look forward for the public's input in that process as well. And those are all the announcements I have for this evening.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Garza. So then we will move to public and employee recognitions, and we'll start with a proclamation for Municipal Court Week. Ms. Hilbert.
Yes, sir. Whereas municipal courts play a significant role in preserving public safety and promoting quality of life in Texas, whereas more people come in contact with municipal courts than all other Texas courts combined, and public impression of the Texas judicial system is largely dependent upon the public's experience in municipal court, whereas the City of Victoria hosts a municipal court, whereas state law authorizes a municipality to either appoint or elect a municipal judge for a term of office, the City of Victoria Municipal Court is a state court, and its judges are members of the state judiciary. Whereas the procedures for the City of Victoria Municipal Court operations are set forth in the Texas Code of Criminal Procedure and other laws of the State of Texas, whereas the City of Victoria is committed to the notion that our legal system is based on the principle that an independent, fair, independent judiciary will interpret and apply the laws that govern us, and that judge and court personnel should comply with the law and act in a manner that promotes public confidence and integrity and impartiality of the judiciary. Whereas Victoria municipal judges are not policymakers for the City of Victoria but are bound by the law and canons of the judicial conduct and are required to make decisions independent of the governing body of the city council, city officials and employees, whereas the city council recognizes the constitutional laws of the State of Texas contain procedural safeguards in criminal cases for all defendants, including indigent defendants, and supports the City of Victoria Municipal Court in complying with such legal requirements. Now therefore, I, Dwayne Crocker, Mayor of the City of Victoria, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of November 3rd through November 7th, 2025, as Municipal Court Week in Victoria, Texas, in recognition of the fair and impartial justice offered by our citizens by the municipal court.
Thank you so much for recognizing Municipal Court Week. This is actually the ninth time that I've been here to recognize it. It's always the first week of November. It's a very important week. We take traffic safety very seriously in municipal court, and it's always a good reminder for everyone, our citizens included, that traffic safety really does help promote all the values that you guys are working for, for this community. So we thank you. I also want to take a minute to thank David, Tara and Rebecca, who are here. We are missing Maria and Tiffany, but they are training to ensure that we have all the utmost, the top education for our community, but these three back here, we couldn't do the job without them. I'm very proud to work with our group. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for the great job that you do. We know we're in good hands, so thank you. All right. Let's move on then to Item B2B, which is our Keep Victoria Beautiful Beautification Award for November.
We were trying to coordinate this to be smooth, and it is not working, and so I think the best way to do this is to kill two birds with one stone, which is a good problem to have because, of course, we're familiar with Meredith Byrd because of her role with Keep Victoria Beautiful, but I'm sure you saw that recently she actually is officially now one of her very own. So she was recently hired as our very first Environmental Programs Manager. In this role, she will promote environmental stewardship by overseeing public outreach, education and program management related to solid waste services. She will also serve as the Executive Director of Keep Victoria Beautiful, I'm sure Christie's loving that, managing its budget, events, fundraising and beautification initiatives. Prior to her current role, she served as Director of Community Engagement for the Food Bank of the Golden Crescent, and of course, served as the Board of Keep Victoria Beautiful for six years, including four years as Chair. And of course, she's a familiar face. We're all accustomed to see her, and so we'd like to congratulate her for her hire, and of course, she always presents this as well.
So he was wondering why I was coming up here. I was like, because I'm excited. So Meredith will be doing this as Executive Director of Keep Victoria Beautiful. I want to say how excited we are in the department, the community should be very excited. She is very passionate about Victoria, as you all know, and what she's done at the farmer's market, how she's grown it. She's done it in such a beautiful, authentic way in the community, and what she's done as KVB Chair the last few years has been wonderful. I'm already hearing new ideas about how to refresh things and do some new initiatives, so I am personally thankful that Meredith has joined the team. So thank you, Meredith. So I'll let her come up now.
That was quite the buildup, so.
Oh, my gosh. Only downhill from here, right? Don't screw this up.
And not to add on to it, but now you're getting paid to do this.
Absolutely. Who said that? Okay, yay. So, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm very, very excited to be up here in this capacity officially with the City of Victoria, and I can't tell you how excited I am to be working for Christie and with Christie. So we've, we're just going to have a blast in doing good things. So before I get to the award, I do want to let you guys know of some changes within KVB. So with me finishing out my term as Chair, Beth Koontz finished out her term as Vice Chair. So we have a new Board Chair, who is Susan Armstrong Kane, and our Vice Chair is Monica Crocker. And so I'm very excited to, you know, work with the Board Leadership and talk to everybody about their goals and how we're going to keep building KVB and keep doing good work. And so on that note, I did want to take just a moment and remind everybody that we do have a neighborhood cleanup coming up on Saturday, the 15th. We will be cleaning up the area surrounding FW Gross Early Childhood Center. This is from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. on Saturday, the 15th, and we are always accepting volunteer signups. You can call our office at 485-3230. You can sign up at keepvictoriabeautiful.org, and we're still definitely in need of volunteers for this cleanup. This is where we canvas the neighborhood and we help residents who might have large items in their yards, tires, tree limbs, appliances, furniture, that they just aren't able to move into dispose of, and so that's where we come in and we are ready to help. We have some sponsors. The Salvation Army will be providing breakfast and coffee. HEB will be providing flowers for residents. Potted Plants, Appliance Pro will be sponsoring the Freon Removal from refrigerators, and you mentioned a fourth sponsor to me today. Four Seasons Nursery is also going to be sponsoring the event. The Fire Department will be installing smoke detectors. We'll have the library and the Parks Department out there with activities, and we'll be grilling hot dogs after. And so if anybody's interested in doing some good work on a Saturday, we're just there from 9:00 to 11:00, quick in and out, and lots of, you know, good determination, lots of work done in a short time. And so, without further ado, now I'd like to talk about the November Beautification This is something that we do every month. We're always accepting nominees. If you know of a business or an organization that deserves to be recognized for the way that their property helps beautify Victoria, you can get in touch with Environmental Services. You can message our Facebook page at Keep Victoria Beautiful. And for November, we are honoring an organization that has a beautiful pumpkin patch that is a staple of the community every fall, and so this month's winner is First United Methodist Church, right around the corner downtown. And so tonight, I would like to welcome Pam Yontz and congratulate First United Methodist on this award, if you'll help me.
Congratulations. Your honor, yours. Thank you very much, Meredith. I appreciate that, and thank you to the city and to the Keep Victoria Beautiful Committee for looking to us at First United Methodist Church and our pumpkin patch. Hopefully, y'all had an opportunity to drive by there during the month of October, because if you drive by there now, you're going to think Meredith is crazy for nominating us for November. However, it was beautiful during the month of October. A lot of work goes into that, and what started out as a church event 33 years ago is now truly a community event, and we would not be able to do this without volunteers from the community. This past year, the Pumpkin Patch donated about $15,000 to nine different nonprofits in Victoria, and hosted over 1,100 kindergarten and pre-K first grade students to the Pumpkin Patch to hear stories and to be able to run around and play games. It's truly a community event, and such a fun, fun event for First United Methodist Church. So again, we thank you very much for that recognition. Appreciate it.
Very well deserved, and thank you all for a great event every year. I know a lot of people participate and look forward to it, so thanks. All right. Mr. Garza, do you have any other public and employee recognitions for us?
Not at this time.
Okay. Moving on then, are there any items from council tonight? Does anyone have anything? No? Okay. Well, then we will jump into Citizens Communication. I have quite a few cards, so I will call you up, and just as a reminder, if you would please keep your remarks to three minutes so that we can get through all of these and respect everyone's time, I would appreciate it. So we will start then with Aubrey Lopez. Good evening. Welcome.
Hi, good evening. My name is Aubrey Lopez, and I'm here to speak about the appointment to the Library Board, the Advisory Committee. I just wanted to remind everyone that even though at times people make it seem like Victoria is a political or ideological monolith, it is not, and our public library serves the entire public. And so with a community as diverse as ours, which it is, I think it's important that we appoint people to the library that are going to serve the entire community. Even though one group or, you know, one ideology may feel that they are the majority, everyone here pays their taxes, and the library serves all of us. And it's important that we keep books and materials in the library that serve all of the members of our community. We need to make sure that everyone is able to find a voice, is able to find representation, and that those materials remain in the library and are not removed. Even if they're not checked out, I know that circulation numbers are often used to remove items, that doesn't mean that people aren't accessing them in the library. So it's important for us to make sure that we appoint people that are not just going to look at numbers, but are going to look at the public and look at the people in it, and make sure that everyone is represented by the materials in the library. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next card I have is Alejandro, I believe it's Gonzalez. Welcome.
Hello, everybody. Alrighty. Right now, just touching on base with the library, I had recently been in there, and it was a rainy day. Guys, we got painting going on in one of the rooms, but we have leaks going on throughout the library. Maybe somebody, you know, that's kind of like kicking a dead horse, you know, whatever. It's going to be a lot of jumping around, but we'll get it together here. Coming up here last Tuesday to speak with someone, just trying to get someone to hear me out, you know, my whole thing is, I try to do everything I can to keep from coming up here, just because it's not a good look, you know, coming out here and just airing our problems out, you know? I just think that, you know, if we all just sat amongst each other and not tell everybody, you know, I'm an in-house type of guy, you know, keep everything in-house, problems, you know, not airing it out, but... So anyway, I'm trying my best. I guess I couldn't get ahold of anyone, so what bothered me coming up here Tuesday, there's a ATV coming from across, from right behind the Sheriff's Department, and right behind that ATV, when he pretty much runs the stop sign, is a police officer, a unit, a car. Had it been me or anybody else, you know, we'd be under the gun. So my thing is, I pull over to the left and I stopped the police officer, you know? To my surprise, he rolls the window down. It's a SWAT officer. I've stopped him, I'm like, hey, you know, why did you allow him to run the stop sign? His response was, well, I wasn't paying attention. So my whole thing is like, oh, he's kind of annoyed at the fact that I stopped him in the middle of the road. He's like, man, I gotta go train. I have to go train, man. What's the deal? You stopped me in the middle of the road, which I say, well, what's the problem with me stopping you in the middle of the road? He doesn't want to answer. You know, he was sharp, you know? So, long story short, my whole thing is, you know, these guys right here, she's going to train, you know? Y'all know what he's going to train for. He's going across to the gun range, you know? You got to kind of start from the bottom, maybe, you know? We got to maybe reset, guys, you know? I hate putting, you know, dampening the mood, you know? I'm pretty sure everybody deserves the awards they got coming, you know, but whatever. That's that, guys. That time, that clock really bothers me, you know, because there's a whole lot to say, a little time to say it, you know? I really try to keep from coming up here, but I think maybe the next go-around would get some more in, you know? There's, you know, there's a lot, guys. I just, you know, one more thing, these streets, man, I don't know who's in charge. Who's in charge, guys? There's a Vine Street up there, Vine Street going, I guess, what is it? Crestwood. Crestwood, and then just keep on going. I guess they sealed and coat. Brand new, beautiful job. You get almost all the way to the end to the curb, and there's a big pothole right next to a manhole. What's going on? You know, my thing is, we outsource, guys are outsourcing companies, getting this, you know, getting this work, and they're taking us for a ride. Who's in charge of the before and after? You know, I mean, we're all on the same boat, guys, you know? We're all the same, you know, the same train, you know? We're hugging the tracks, guys, you know?
Because all the time, if you could wrap it up for me, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir. I appreciate your time, and, you know, I'm gonna give us a break for a little while, man, but happy holidays, everybody.
Thanks for your comments. Appreciate it. All right. Next card I have is Michael Vondro. Mr. Vondro, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm Michael Vondro. I live at 2107 North Bend, Jordan. You can vote till 7:00 p.m. today at the Public Library, if you haven't voted today. I would like to thank the Police Department for not enforcing the law. It's illegal to ride a bicycle on a sidewalk. It's a $285 fine, but there's really no other place to ride it. I'm more or less speaking for the homeless persons, the people that, you know, can't never afford a car for one reason or another. I'm only riding a bike because my mechanic, he screwed up the timing belt and it slipped off, and I might need another engine or get it rebuilt, and the new mechanic can't look at it till the 15th, you know? But the police so far aren't enforcing it, and so I appreciate them for not enforcing it, because, you know, like, if you're like five years old, you don't want to be training your daughter or to be riding a tricycle in the road, training, you know? Usually, it would be on the sidewalk, and it's dangerous going on Main Street or Nabearo, you know, on the road and stuff, and I appreciate it. We're not big like Austin where we can have these bike ways, and we don't have the money or the space to put specific bike paths and stuff like that. And also, I would like to thank Animal Control, Mark Sloot and the rest of the people for taking care of these dangerous dogs. They were on 2207 Jacker Street. There must have been like 30 of them, and I know they probably got like 15 or 20 of them, and they spent all last week taking care of it, so I appreciate it. And the last city attorney, he made a law where there's no limit to how many dogs you can have. If you want to have 100 dogs, you can, you know? And the state law says four dogs. The City of Victoria said there's no limit, and people are having way more than four, and I would like the city law to match the state law and make it four dogs. They're having too many dogs, and they're biting people. One tried to lunge at me and bite me, and I had to pepper spray him last Friday, and I do appreciate the police helping, and KAVU25, they've been tracking these dogs and letting animal control services know where they are, but there's no room for dogs anymore because it's gearing toward a no kill shelter, so you're kind of on your own if you need to have a dog taken to animal control, but I do appreciate what they did, and have a good evening, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vondro. The next card I have is Alicia Coiar Garcia. Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Board, City Council. As I said, my name is Alicia Coiar Garcia, and I am an applicant for the Victoria Public Library Advisory Board. I am a former middle school teacher, reading teacher with VISD. I also was a former librarian for Trinity Episcopal School. I am currently a small business owner, and I am also a member of the INES, the Industrial Education Foundation. With my past experience, my current experience, and the fact that I am passionate about literacy, access and community involvement, I think that what I have to offer, I would feel privileged and honored to be considered as an applicant and ought to be placed on the Library Advisory Board to support the great work that our library is already doing. That's all I have, short and sweet. I wanted to be able to get in and out, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. The next one I have is Regina Stacks. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Regina Stacks. We have lived in Victoria for about five years. Not to say that it's, that's all the time I've spent, I am up here to address the Advisory Library Council or to get on the board. We own Texas Southwind Vineyard and Winery, and even though I've only lived in Victoria five years, we have been a part of the Victoria community for over 23 years, as we moved out to between Goliad and Refugio back in 20 and 2002. So I have been very, I have homeschooled our two children, and we have been very strong in the track homeschool group. Also, in the library, we spent hours and hours and hours in the library researching and teaching, teaching the children how to look up books, how to research, use every, everything that they have to offer. Now that I am a grandmother, I have eight grandchildren being homeschooled, and now they are using the library. So I am a very strong opponent in keeping the integrity of the library. You know, in the information age, you know, everything's with the touch of a button, but there is nothing like walking into the library and smelling the books on the shelf and seeing all the books on the shelf, you know? It's becoming a thing of the past, and I don't want it to be. It's very important, and, you know, Victoria has, they have done a tremendous job for us and our business. We have so much, so much that Victoria has given to us, and I would love to give back to Victoria. My time and... would love to give back to Victoria, my time and anything that I have to offer, because they have, they have held our company to very high standards, and I appreciate it, um, so it would be an honor to serve on this library board, and to do the best possible for our children, but not only our children, but everyone who walks into a library, it's so important these days for everyone to have that opportunity, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stacks. The next card I have is Ashley Conno. Good evening, welcome.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Council members, um, like you said, my name is Ashley Conno, I am a Victoria native, um, grew up here, uh, my five older boys also utilize the public library, I'm here for, um, consideration for appointment to the Victoria Library Advisory Board, um, so I grew up in the library, I, I know what it, it shaped my love of learning, um, and I know how its programs and resources have built our community, and I'm just so passionate about that, um, in my professional career in community involvement and development and leadership development, and in the volunteer organizations that I've been in over the past, I really want to offer that expertise to the library board, and being able to connect people with resources, and in furthering that programming, uh, to make Victoria a better place, um, and I thank y'all for y'all's consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Conno. All right, the next card I have is Victoria Hudgens. Good evening, welcome.
Hello, um, I'm Victoria, I'm yet another applicant for the Victoria Public Library Advisory Board, so I just wanted to come and introduce myself to all of you tonight, I'm a lifelong Crossroads resident, I grew up just down the road in Cuero, went to college in San Marcos and moved back shortly after graduation, where I've been a resident of the city of Victoria for just under a decade now, I'm actually thirty-two, I don't quite look thirty-two.
Good for you.
Let's see, what was I gonna say? Yeah, um, so all the important details that I wanted to share, they're in the application that I've provided, but I just wanted to reiterate tonight that I believe my, my academic background in English, my professional history in publishing, writing, and editing, and my personal experience as a lifelong reader, a lifelong lover of books and other types of media, make me a particularly strong candidate for this opportunity, and I really appreciate your consideration. On a completely different note, I also wanted to invite all of you out to the Crossroad Community Band's Veterans Day Concert, we're performing next Tuesday at seven PM at the Victoria West High School Auditorium, um, it's free, you don't have to have a ticket or anything like that, you can just show up, enjoy some great music, and help us honor and celebrate our veterans, it's one of our favorite concerts we do each year, so we hope to see you there, and if I scoot out of this meeting before seven o'clock, it's because we have our final rehearsal tonight, so just wanted to let you all know, it's not a lack of interest, it's just, I gotta go play my French horn, so, thank you all.
Great, thank you, appreciate your comments. And then, my last card is for Lee Zeppelin. Good evening, welcome.
Welcome, um, my name is Lee Zeppelin, um, I am not a fan of talking in front of people, so I'm gonna pretend like you're all dogs and cats and animals, because that's what I usually talk to, um, I am a native Victorian, um, moved away, when I went to Texas A&amp;M and graduated from vet school, got married, did the thing, came back to Victoria, where all my family is, and have owned a veterinary clinic here for twenty-one years now, which occupies a lot of my time, but my kids were raised here, we spent a lot of time in the library, personally, it was a huge thing in my upbringing, um, I totally agree with the sentiment of, I, I really want real libraries to exist in the age of all the digital, that there's still books, I would take my kids to the library book sale, I still go to the library book sale, but I just want there to be a good selection of good books for people, especially our youth, because I think that's the most important age group, to be able to access that and know how to access it, and it's not just like Googling it, so, um, but anyway, I would just appreciate being considered, because I do, I love to read, I want our youth to continue to want to do that, and not just be watching videos on their phones all the time, so, anyway, thank you for your consideration.
Great, thank you for your comments, and thank you all for your comments this evening, much appreciated. All right, so moving on then, we have a couple of items, uh, with public hearings, so we'll start with item C one.
Item C one is the adoption, or a resolution of re-adopting the City of Victoria, uh, tax abatement guidelines.
Good evening, Ms. Williams.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, this is a new clicker, oh, not the right one, thank you, okay, all right, so tonight I'm just gonna provide a brief, um, overview of our current and existing guidelines that we have on file, um, and we will run through this briefly, please feel free to stop me at any moment, um, purpose and background, tax abatements are used as a strategic economic tool, um, in order to attract quality development, stimulate job creation, and strengthen our local economy, and so, um, people use it across the state and even in other states very effectively to draw in those larger manufacturers or primary jobs, um, we have the policy framework, as is the guidelines presented, our guidelines establish clear measurable criteria for evaluating projects, it's very structured, and it, um, ensures consistency, transparency, and accountability in all abatement decisions while supporting sustainable growth, so for today, um, it's simply just a review, and, um, this is a requirement that we have to do every two years by the state of Texas to get these re-, um, re-adopted, and there are no changes presented today, exactly the same as they've been for the last two years. So what is a tax abatement? Tax abatement is a temporary tax relief for a developer looking to move their business or start a business here, large business here, it's a strategic reduction in property taxes for a defined period, allowing businesses to reinvest savings into their operations and community presence, it's also a development incentive, um, for new construction, substantial renovation, or expansion in projects that create jobs, um, and of course, increase the tax base over time, and then it could also be a very big economic catalyst in our community, drives investment in our community by offsetting initial costs for the developer making projects financially viable that might otherwise locate elsewhere, so it's a very strategic tool, as mentioned before. Eligible projects under the guidelines are new construction, they must be of five-hundred-thousand investment or more, they cannot be less, um, they can be applied to major renovation or expansions, if we have a large manufacturer that is already existing, and they decide to add on to expand their production and increase the job growth, it can be used for that as well, um, we do have a series of authorized facilities listed in the guidelines, those being manufacturing, research facility, distribution center, regional service facility, uh, telecommunications, even a regional visitor amusement facility, regional sports facility, green industry, healthcare, and now our corporate professional headquarters, so very large investments, um, and of course, job creation, any, um, any developer looking to do a tax abatement with us would have to create ten or more jobs as also a requirement to be eligible. Ineligible property, anything that is outside of a reinvestment, already established reinvestment zone is not eligible, as you may recall, earlier this year, we did establish a reinvestment zone in the Lone Tree Industrial Park for Zephros, and we, and then they also, we turned around and provided a tax abatement for them as well, so first, you have to establish the reinvestment zone for the property, and then you can enter into an abatement agreement with the company and the city, of course, it all comes to you guys, or council, and/or the county for a final approval, and we'll go through that in a little more detail, um, cannot be used in retail development or housing, cannot be used on government or state-owned property, of course, because it has to be taxable property, um, and then it cannot be used for regional or routine maintenance, on standard repairs, minor upgrades, or property maintenance activities. So, some of the minimal, minimum qualifications is, of course, that five-hundred-thousand investment in the project, it must create ten or more jobs, and it must also provide wages that are ten times the average weekly wage across the sectors for the county, Victoria County, the projects must demonstrate clear economic benefit through investment, job creation, wage equality, and preference can be given to projects that exceed the minimum thresholds utilizing local workforce, serving strategic industries, or, um, in our, that are identified in our economic strategic plan. In the guidelines, there is a breakdown in the phase in over the eight years for how we would look at a project based off of their total taxable investment, and this gives you a breakdown, it's phased in, you start on year one, you go through, you could go up to ye- eight years on this scale, but also, for transformative projects exceeding a hundred million dollars, or creating a hundred-plus new jobs, they could qualify for a hundred percent abatement for ten years, which is of course, subject to council approval, and that is the state limit, ten years is the state limit, you can't provide a tax abatement for more than that. Application process, we have a pre-application meeting, uh, with economic development staff, we discuss the project's scope, eligibility, and documentation requirements, then they submit a formal application through our office, and we check it for completeness, and then, um, we continue to evaluate it and provide that policy criteria and recommendation to council, like we did over this past summer, and then, of course, we bring it for council consideration through a public hearing, and then we execute the agreement upon approval. So, agreement and compliance, um, each abatement includes a legally binding agreement, of course, um, investment amounts, job creation targets, wage requirements, and project completion timelines, these terms protect the taxpayer interest and ensure promised benefits materialize, and we also, uh, we monitor the project throughout the duration of the abatement, to ensure that they are meeting those benchmarks, such as payroll that might have been stipulated in their agreement, the amount of jobs that went, might have been stipulated in, uh, stipulated in the agreement, and we keep track of those throughout the term of the tax abatement. So, there is also some other reporting that we have to do through the state, we have annual report, reports that we submit every year, um, we also check investment verification whenever they complete the capital project on their expenditures, to make sure it aligns with the agreement, and then we have performance review, of course, um, to make sure they're keeping up with those benchmarks. And then we have some provi- provisions, if they do not meet those benchmarks or requirements as originally agreed upon with recapture and/or termination, um, failure to meet job creation commitments, reinvestment thresholds, or other material terms triggers recapture process, um, partial recapture is, if targets partially met proportional, recapture applied, city recovers abated taxes corresponding to shortfall percentage, and then there's also, um, could be a full termination clause in there as well, and that's when they don't meet any of the requirements that were stipulated in the original agreement. Recapture provisions protect public investment while allowing the flexibility for good faith circumstances, and our goal ultimately is to have good partnerships with success and, and hold them accountable, um, so that we are taking care of the taxpayers' funds appropriately. So, that concludes my presentation, are there any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Ms. Williams? All right, thanks for the refresher, we appreciate it.
Sure, thank you.
So with that then, we will open up, or I will open up the public hearing with respect to item C one, is there anyone who wishes to address council about this matter, please come forward at this time? Seeing no one then, I will close the public hearing on item C one and entertain any motions with respect to this item.
Motion to re-adopt the City of Victoria tax abatement guidelines.
Second. Got a motion as a second, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And C one passes, so then we will move on to our second public hearing, which is item C two.
Item C two is an ordinance amending chapter fourteen, section eight, of the City of Victoria Code of Ordinances to levy and collect fees for liquor sales within the city as authorized by state law.
Good evening, Ms. Hilbert.
Thank you, good evening, Mayor and Council, of all days for me to have a really bad voice, I have several presentations.
So it generally works, yeah.
So, uh, the ordinance before you proposed is changes to the city code that were brought about by the passage of Senate Bill one thousand and eight, uh, Senate Bill was passed during the eighty-ninth Texas Legislative Session, and it states that a county municipality, oh, I'm not even moving my hands, oh, no, I didn't have one, sorry, we didn't do one for this, I'm confused, um, but we, uh, that, a county municipality, public health district, including an authorized agent employer department, may not charge a fee under section eleven-point thirty-eight or sixty-one per thirty-six of the Texas Alcoholic Beverage Code, if the premises is a food service establishment, a retail food store, a mobile food unit, roadside food vendor, or temporary food service establishment that has already paid a fee to operate to the Department of State Health Services, or to any county, municipality, or public health district, now this law, um, kind of first came about in twenty-twenty-three, um, David and I talked about it at that time, but that one specifically said public health district, and so after getting an interpretation of it, we were kind of exempt from that rule because it didn't say department, so that they've gone back in, has changed the, the ruling to add the department, and so that now we have to abide by the regulations that were set forth at the, previously, so due to the legislation, the City of Victoria is no longer permitted to charge businesses that have already paid a fee to operate to the Department of State Health Services, or to Victoria County, or, or to any county, municipality, or public health district, including an authorized agent employee or department, um, fees, if they've already paid fees for a municipal liquor license, or for the municipal liquor license, so the proposed ordinance would amend the city code to just accommodate the changes, my department has really worked hard with the Victoria Public Health Department, um, to can, to go through our entire list of, uh, liquor license holders for the City of Victoria, and compare them to who they charge for different types of permits, so that we can compare the list, and, uh, make sure that we are charging who we should, and not charging the others, so we wouldn't be in violation, we did, um, proactively mail out letters to all businesses in City of Victoria that have liquor licenses, to tell them about the change, um, the law actually states that we can't charge, but it doesn't say I don't have to issue a permit or a license, so we still do that, so at the beginning of every month, my department goes through and issues licenses to existing businesses that, um, whose liquor license is expiring, uh, proactively send those out, and then we build a few that we are allowed to still charge, now, um, it does, uh, change things for us, um, examples of who still has to pay is gonna be like your local distributors, um, some of the liquor stores, not all of them, but some of them, and then some bars that only sell like wine and beer only, not actual mixed beverages, so, um, we have about twenty-two businesses that we can still charge, which is only about twenty-five percent of what we were charging previously, so it is a substantial reduction, and just keep in mind that liquor licenses are only paid every two years, so some of them will pay this year, some of them will pay, you know, uh, next year, so it's kind of hard to capture the exact fees, but it will reduce substantially, so, does anybody have any questions about the law, or the change?
Sounds like we still have to do the work, we just don't get paid for it anymore.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, somebody else is getting it, okay, fair enough, well, we appreciate you keeping aligned with state law, so, with that then, I will open up a public hearing with respect to item C two, if there's anyone who wishes to address council on this matter, please come forward at this time, seeing no one, I will then close item C two and entertain any motions with respect to this item.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We've got a motion as a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And C two passes, so our final public hearing tonight is item C three.
And item C three is an ordinance amending chapter twenty-four, section twenty-two, of the City of Victoria Code of Ordinances to make changes to the fees administered by the Public Health Department.
Okay, so although my name is beside this one, I'm gonna introduce Dave Gonzalez with Victoria County Public Health Department to provide this presentation, it's kind of a companion to the one that I just presented.
Mr. Gonzalez, welcome.
Thank y'all, good evening, Mayor and Council, so, um, as April alluded to, Senate Bill ten-oh-eight, uh, provided some changes to not only alcohol permit fees, but some law permitting fees, and our oversight to permit certain agencies, or certain establishments and businesses, um, so, um, we are proposing some, uh, fee changes for different services that we do provide, um, we've had to make some modifications and edits to comply with Senate Bill ten-ten-oh-eight, as well as House Bill twenty-eight forty-four, which is also known as the food truck bill, um, as well as Senate Bill five forty-one, which is the cottage food bill, um, so I believe y'all do, hopefully you do have the redline version of those fees, um, there's gonna be some changes, there's minor increases on the retail food establishment permit fees, uh, to our best recollection, I think it's been at least eight years, probably close to a decade since those, um, any of those fees were increased, um, they're somewhere between ten and fifteen percent, just to really keep up with operational costs and, um, for our department, um, we've combined some of the late fees into a flat fee, uh, we've removed a few fees that, um, are not compliant with Senate Bill ten-oh-eight, um, such as permit rep- um, such as permit replacement fees. Uh, we've changed some inspection, uh, inspection fees to realign with DSHS in their direction. Um, we've, um, changed up the temporary food establishment fees to where it's essentially just charged to an individual and not an event vendor or organizer. Um, the mobile food, uh, unit, uh, fees is gonna change twice actually this next year. So initially, we're gonna align with DSHS, um, at the $258, uh, which is a $58 increase. However, in July of 2026, um, permitting of all food trucks, mobile food units will go through Department of, Department of State Health Services and their requirements. However, um, currently discussions with the commissioners, um, of DSHS, we are looking at possibly contracting subcontracting with them to continue to provide the services because they just cannot provide that service to all the jurisdictions in Texas. So it may, we may turn around and be a subcontractor to them to continue providing those that we do now. And then finally, the farmer's market fee, um, has been changed a bit. Uh, before it was, um, in regards to those vendors that sell ungraded eggs. And now it's gonna be for time and temperature controlled foods. So in a nutshell, that is what all those Senate bills kinda come to us and the changes that we're looking at. Then there's gonna be some removals that aren't gonna be reflected in the fees, um, such as the establishments and, um, uh, businesses that were able to, um, inspect and permit. Um, one, we're, um, not able to, um, inspect, uh, daycare kitchens anymore. Um, there's gonna be some changes to hospital kitchens as well as schools, uh, and churches also. Um, so we're working through those. Um, obviously, we wanna provide as much, um, uh, education and awareness to those individuals that operate to food establishments. So we're gonna continue to be providing that information out to them, um, to make sure everybody's on board and providing safe, um, food and safety environments. Um, with that, um, I think that's about it. Mary, I have Mary Tangimar, Environmental Division Director with us as well. Um, she is much more knowledgeable on this, but I was trying to summarize this into, um, uh, some key points. Um, I've worked like, uh, April said, I've worked with Hilbert and Ms. Lacy on this as well, um, to make sure we're complying along with our county attorney to make sure everything's on board. Um, so the fees, um, they're in front, um, and I would, uh, yeah, available if you have any questions.
Great, thanks for the info. Any questions? All right, thank you, appreciate you being here. So with that then, I will open up the hearing with respect to item C3. Is there anyone who wishes to address counsel on this matter? Please come forward. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on item C3 and entertain any motions with respect to this item.
I move we adopt.
I'll second.
All right, I've got a motion as second, is there any discussion? Got to stay in compliance with state law. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that takes us to our public hearings. Let's jump to our consent agenda. Ms. Hilbert.
Item D1 is the adoption amendment to the regular meeting held on October 21st, 2025. Item D2 is a resolution approving the payment of TCEQ, annual consolidated water quality assessment fee for the wastewater treatment plants in the amount of $114,324.67. Item D3 is a resolution approving a supplement agreement to the multiple use agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation for License Plate Readers Program. Item D4 is a resolution approving a contract amendment with, uh, Pictometry International Corporation DBA's Eagle View to provide LiDAR capture contour topography data for Victoria County for a total amount of $165,184. And item D5 is a resolution approving an inter-local agreement with Victoria County for reimbursement of costs of the Pictometry International Corp. DBA is Eagle View providing LiDAR capture contour topography data for Victoria County in amount of $126,024.
Thank you, Ms. Hilbert. Do I have a motion with respect to the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda as read. Second.
Got a motion as second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the consent agenda passes. So we'll jump to our lone action item, uh, item E1.
Item E1 is a resolution appointing two members to the Victoria Public Library Advisory Board. And for the record, I did offer to read the agenda, the consent agenda for April and she turned me down.
Ms. Hilbert, you're doing the heavy lifting tonight, we appreciate it, thank you.
There and I, Sandra offered to come and attend the council meeting as well, but I hated to keep her.
That's her Michael Jordan moment. The flu game.
The flu game, right, yeah.
Okay, so the resolution before you tonight will appoint two new members to the library advisory board. And the purpose of the library advisory board is to advise, uh, Victoria Public Library on matters pertaining to the development of immediate and long-range policies and programs, the annual proposed budget as, uh, or the development of immediate and long-range and the annual proposed budget as established by library administration, um, and improvement and expansion of library services and facilities and any other matters determined by the library director. So this board is a little different than most of our boards because it is, is large and 11 members strong. Um, their appointments are for three years. City appointments, uh, appointees can serve two consecutive terms and county appointees can serve three consecutive terms. So, uh, the county appoints four members, which currently they have appointed LaChandria Harris, Bobby Garner, James Cammuck and Sherry Mansickle. And though their terms are up as well, so I assume that they'll be, uh, reappointing or appointing new members soon. The four city appointees are Ashley Sisson, Catherine Olson, Sarah Zeller and Prima Rajan. Uh, Ms. Rajan did, um, recently, um, in August, actually resigned her position. The other, uh, three positions on the board, one is a joint city-county appointee. Uh, Ms. Gay Potek currently holds that position. And then there's a representative of the Friends of Library, which Harley Fisk serves in that spot. And then Catherine Kopecky represents the Bronte Club on the board. So again, two appointments for city positions with terms ending in September 30th of 2028. We have eight applicants. Um, Ms. Zeller, uh, unfortunately does not want to be reappointed and Ms. Rajan did resign in August. And so the applicants we have are, um, Adam Daughtry, Anna Laurel, um, Anne Riggs, Ashley Conno, Alicia Queira Garcia, Dr. Lee Zeppelin Askew and Victoria Hudgens and Regina Staggs. Do you all have any questions about the presentation before we vote?
They already voted.
Okay, so the ballots were placed on your, on the dais before the meeting. Each ballot does contain your name because you cannot vote by secret ballot and the ballots will be on, uh, filed in my office if anybody wishes to review them. So just keep in mind that the applicants must receive a majority of the votes in order to be placed on the board. So it might take us a few times of voting.
While they're counting those, I do wanna say thank you to those members that are rolling off. I see Ms. Zeller here. We appreciate your service, uh, to the library. I know you will be missed on that board, so thank you for, uh, stepping up and helping the community. We appreciate it.
Okay, so we got one. So Ms. Ashley Conno did receive four votes, so her name will be placed in the resolution, but we'll use, um, the ballots numbered, number two to vote again between Anna Laurel and Victoria Hudgens. So just those two names, so it'd be number two and number seven on your list.
Everybody's here, it can't be a tie.
So the second vote resulted in, um, Victoria Hudgens being the, uh, choice. So her name will also be added into the resolution. So again, it would be, um, Victoria Hudgens and.
Ashley. Ashley Conno.
I'm sorry, they all have, a bunch of them have A names. A little bit confusing, so.
Okay, so I will need a motion to approve the resolution adding Ms. Hudgens and Ms. Conno's name to that resolution.
I move to, uh, add those names to the resolution.
I'll second that.
All right.
Thank you.
Got a motion as second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the resolution passes. Okay, that then completes our action items for the evening. I understand that we will have a short executive session?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it is 5:58, we'll take a, we will recess, take a 10-minute break and then re-adjourn into, uh, executive session.
The city council recessed for executive session on the 4th day of November 2025 at 5:58 PM. Subject matter is as follows, Texas Government Code 551.087, 551.072 and 551.